I don't have like a refresh, I don't want to refresh buttons, you know. I'm still not getting it Greg. I don't know what's going on. Do you want to just read it off? Is it, is it, can you just tell me what?
Are we talking about the teleconference?
Yeah, oh, you have it, alright, thanks. Awesome, thank you very much. Fantastic, fantastic.
I like sitting there.
You're fine. Alright, good morning, everybody, we will call the December 2nd special meeting of the San Vito County Board of Supervisors to order. Before we get going, we need to make it clear that pursuant to government code 54953, Supervisor Curro is participating by teleconference at the address that's listed on the agenda. In accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the agenda. And then, so if you have any questions, that's on there. And then for Supervisor Curro, if we can get her on, I have, as County Council advised, I have to ask a few questions. Supervisor Curro, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, good morning, everyone.
Good morning Supervisor Curro. And you could hear us until now, I assume, since you just.
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes, at the front desk.
Great, is it reasonably accessible to the public?
Yes.
Although I don't know if that actually is still the rule. Is there any member of the public with you that you'd like to participate, that would like to participate in public comment?
No, there is not, and I have no one 18 years of age or older with me.
Okay. Alright, anybody not here Supervisor Curro, I can hear her well, and I only have one working ear, so I assume everyone else can hear her unless I'm hearing otherwise, and the record should reflect that all board members have indicated they were able to hear Supervisor Curro.
And Mr. Chair, can we just make it clear that I am attending the California State Association of Counties Conference, and that is why I'm not at our admin location.
Great, and then any votes will need to be taken by roll call as well. So, great, alright, so that would take us to our consent agenda, actually first, Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Velazquez.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Pride of the United States, to the Republic for which it stands, on mission under God, indivisible, infinite, eternally.
Alright, can we acknowledge certificate of posting, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second, second, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Supervisor Cosmickey?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Sotelo? Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five O vote, motion passes.
Great, does anyone want to pull any items from consent?
I just, I had a question on the first one, so one, and I would like to pull, so item 1A and 1B.
Okay, great, so that has been pulled, and I can hopefully answer that question. So I had to, I have to make a known for the record that I'd meant to recuse myself from 1A at the prior meeting. It was on consent, and, or at least had to ask County Council, I'd meant to ask County Council if I needed to abstain since it was a non-monetary contract. And then I realized after the meeting I had not done so, essentially I forgot, as intended, and contacted County Council, and he advised me essentially to bring it back for reconsideration. And I insisted on doing it at the very first meeting that we could, or would have done it last week if we had a meeting last week. So I'll let a known for the record that I'm abstaining from 1A since the MOU involves an entity that was a source of income of four, $500 or more over the past 12 months, and so I will recuse myself and step up for that item.
I don't really, I don't, I just was curious why it was on here and it was that he was recusing himself. I didn't know if there was something more to it, and then I thought, oh my gosh, well, is there something maybe I need to do? But, so anyways, I just wasn't sure what it was for and why he was recusing himself, not that any of us need that explanation, but just, I was just curious if there was anything we need to be cautious of, so I'm good with it, thank you.
Yes, as Supervisor Cosmickey mentioned, he contacted me immediately following the meeting to explain that the district was a source of income to him over $500 over the last 12 months. At which time we discussed how best to cure the conflict by not having disclosed it and recused himself at the prior meeting. So as he indicated, my advice was, we're going to place it back on the agenda for reconsideration. That would give him the opportunity then to cure and to clear the record to make sure it's very clear that in fact he did have a conflict, he did disclose, and he did abstain. And so that was all based on my advice to him to ensure that we comply with all of the requirements of the Political Reform Act.
Alright, if there's Supervisor Curro, did you have anything?
My only comment would be just for transparency purposes, and so that nothing comes back on this item. Is that instead of number two authorizing the board chair to sign the agreement, I would authorize an amendment to have the vice chair sign.
Okay. Is there a motion then?
Public comment?
Oh, we didn't do public comment, okay, public comment.
Those who wish to make public comment on the consent agenda, please press the star nine or the raise your hand icon, or provide a speaker card. On Zoom, we have. Ella, you've been unmuted, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Elias Salinas, I too wanted to pull this agenda item 1A. The fact that he has already made an estate, he has abstained. He was already in a meeting, there is already a conflict, the public needs to know what the $500 were for, is, did he work an assignment for the school? Or was it, he must disclose whether it was a campaign contribution, or whether he did work some type of side work for the school. And I completely agree with Supervisor Curro. If he must recuse himself, he cannot be the individual that has signed, I mean, that's A, B, C. You know, that shouldn't even have to be explained, I don't know who decided to put his name on there when he has to abstain. So yeah, it should be the vice chair that signs it. Again, full transparency, this is what Supervisor Cosmickey claims to have, is a full transparency. So he must disclose where the $500, was that for a campaign contribution? Or was that for work that he's doing? And if it's work that he's doing for a school district, then it is, continues to be a conflict. And if it's a campaign contribution, it also continues to be a conflict with regard to the decisions that are made at the diet. So this is something that's going to have to get reviewed by more than just what is being said today by County Council, thank you.
We have no further comments.
Great. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sorry, well, you said there was a.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
No, I was gonna second, but it looks like Greg maybe had a comment. I didn't know if we needed, in the second, do I need to say something about with the signature being the vice chair?
So, just to respond, first Supervisor Cosmickey has made it clear that the school district has been a source of income to him. And of course, that is on the basis of work performed for the district, has nothing to do with campaign contributions, or otherwise he would have disclosed that. Also, the direction was to have the vice chair sign the contract, that was just simply an oversight on staff's part that should have been included in the agenda as written. So there is no action on the part of Supervisor Cosmickey to attempt to go ahead and sign this MOU. And so we had discussed that, and it was determined that the vice chair would be the only appropriate person to sign that. It was simply an oversight, and so as part of the motion, yes, it should indicate that the vice chair will execute the MOU on behalf of the county in light of the conflict that's been disclosed and Supervisor Cosmickey's abstention as chair.
So do we need to do any, do we need to change anything with the motion, or are we good on?
I believe the clerk is, if you just indicate that you will approve the motion as stated by County Council, we'll be good.
So Supervisor Velazquez, do you want to make the motion?
You stated it as by County Council, so.
So you're the motion?
Yeah, the motion is again, for approval with the change of having the vice chair sign the agreement.
And I'll second.
Great, we're first and second, roll call vote.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Sotelo?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Four O vote, motion passes.
We'll get Supervisor Cosmickey back.
Very much, so we'll move on to, did we approve the rest of consent? No, and do we get public comment on? On this side, okay, so we'll call for public comment on the remainder of consent?
If you'd like to make public comment on the remainder of consent agenda, please press R9 or the raise your hand icon or provide a speaker card. We. You've been unmuted, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Elias Salinas, I want to make a statement on 1.6, 1.6? I'm sorry, 1Z is in Charles. This is the Human Health Services budget management using their reserves to assist with the tiny homes so that there's no loss of funds and we meet the deadline. I just wanted to put it on the record that now that Human Health Services has volunteered to do this, that the Board of Supervisors does not take this as a card block to continue to dig into the reserves of Human Health Services. Those funds are needed, there's a reason why they're reserved, and I do not want to see the supervisors continually take money from these reserves, thank you.
We have no further comments.
Great, thank you very much, anything further from the board? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the remainder of consent?
I believe.
I had pulled, I had pulled 1B.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I missed that, Supervisor Sotelo, go ahead, we apologize for that. So, so we would just be approving 1C then? So I'd entertain a motion to approve 1C, and then we'll go back to 1B, is there a motion for 1C?
Yes, motion to approve 1C.
Alright, we have a first, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call please.
Supervisor Cosmickey?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Sotelo?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five O vote, motion passes.
Alright, thank you very much, that would take us now to 1B, Supervisor Sotelo.
Thank you, yeah, I just, I have a lot of questions on this one, just because I don't know kind of what's going on, but, okay, so first question, I'm curious why we are changing this you know, why we're having to amend our meeting schedule to make this a regular meeting?
The CIO, did you want to respond?
Yes, so based on the results of the denial of the housing element by the planning commission, we are at the point in which we can potentially miss deadlines to apply for funding. I have public works in the room as well to explain how this delay in the housing element approval potentially jeopardizes some of the funding that we are expecting to receive from the state. Not only that, for other grant funding as well, as well, is this delay is important for us to meet the deadline with the state, we out of compliance as of today, we received a letter like three months ago, and we replied to the state that we were working on the housing element, and it was very unfortunate, it wasn't approved. So we are required to have the housing element coming into a regular meeting, and therefore, in order to meet certain deadlines, we are requesting that this meeting be considered to be a regular meeting so that we can meet the deadline. And I have staff available if you have additional questions.
Well, I'm curious, what is the deadline?
Do you remember the deadline?
The housing element.
November of 2023, so whether we do it next week, or we do it the 16th, or we do it the 23rd, all of that, we've been out of compliance for two years.
Since 2023 Supervisor.
I guess my question is, like, we've been out of compliance for two years, why now, all of a sudden, this crazy rush, right? Where we have to schedule the, you know, we're sending out public notices, like, again, I don't know all of the background, like, what's all happening. So I'm coming into this just completely, what's happening? This seems very out of the norm, it seems like now, all of a sudden, it's kind of, no, we have to get it done tomorrow. Like, as if the deadline is December 10th, right? So I'm just trying to understand what, kind of what's happening here.
Sure, yeah, if I may, just really, really brief background, when I came into the county, April of 2022, there was a lot of turnover, there was only two planners at the department, and slowly we started rebuilding, we ended up hiring Stephanie, then Victor, then Jonathan, on into the career. But, and then we had major projects as well, sure de verde, the landfill expansion, Bedabell. But we still were able to then kick off the housing elements later that year. In September, we actually had our first workshop at the epicenter with the Council of Governments and AMBEP as well. And so, so we've been working all along to where we got to the May 20th date, where we came before the Board of Supervisors with the adoption of the housing element, however, the requirement is to, from HCD is, prior to certification from HCD, is the rezones of Program 32, which is the rezones of the 12 parcels. And regarding, regarding the meeting today and consultation with our CIO, because of the grants that, the grant opportunities that we have, including, talking with Steve, we have the CBG grant for close to $11 million that's dependent on a certified housing element and progress of the housing element, and also in consultation with Enrique from HHSA, grants such as the permanent local housing allocation, PLHA competitive grant, the home grant, the HHAP, homeless housing assistance and prevention. Those are grants that are very critical for their department, and which is why in consultation with the CIO, in order for us to be able to not hopefully miss out on any additional opportunities, the hope is to have the first meeting on the 9th, the first reading, and then the second reading on the 16th of December. Otherwise, it would be, the first reading would be on December 16th, and then the second reading would be in January.
And just to, just to confirm, I just found my letter. We were reached out by the state of California Housing Community Development that manages most of the grants, especially the $11.5 million that we're still not able to secure, and we were asked to provide a timeline, when are we going to meet the deadline? And I'm just find out my letter right now, and we stated in our letter that the deadline will be met by early December 2025, Board of Supervisors' second reading adoption and rezon ordinance and JPA. So we send that letter back in September with the timeline of all the events, what was happening, and we also secure a funding grant, or the rezoning would receive additional $75,000 or $79,000 as a grant to do the rezoning from the housing community development. So it's a combination of different things that we did, but our letter clearly states that December was to be having approved the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, I guess my question then is, what happened to the planning to where we're deciding a week before the meeting that we're going to change and have a regular board meeting, like, why didn't we, why were we, if we knew in September that that was the, that was our goal, why didn't we start planning for that in September to make sure that we were? This makes us look really bad in the public, really, really bad.
The problem was that the planning commission didn't go the way that it was supposed to go in approving the housing element. And so because of that situation, we were kind of like, start working on the agenda so that we can make it happen and meet the deadline that we submitted to the state.
So I guess, in a perfect world, had the planning commission gone the way that you wanted, or whatever it was, would that have changed the process for these meetings then? Would we not have had to do the first reading and the second reading? Would we just be adopting, like, what kind of changed with that, if you can maybe explain that to me?
Absolutely, thank you Supervisor Sotelo. So if the planning commission at its regular meeting of November 19th would have recommended to the Board of Supervisors the approval of the rezoning of the 12 parcels, then, and County Council can correct me if I'm wrong, but that essentially would have served as the first reading of the ordinance, and then on the regular meeting of December 16th would have been the second reading.
Okay, thank you, that really helps explain it. You know, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but the notification seems to be an issue. I actually made a few phone calls to people this morning that live in that area. Nobody can recall receiving a letter within that 300-foot buffer zone. I'm really, really concerned about the transparency and about what has been done. I feel like we are opening ourselves up to litigation, we obviously, we all received a letter from an attorney on Sunday evening. I just, you know, and I think it's really unfortunate that people that are involved in this won't be able to be a part of the process for the first reading. I don't, you know, I want to make sure that whenever we're doing something, we really have the feedback, and particularly for the people that are involved, that they have their opportunity. And so I would prefer, I would prefer that we do the first reading on the 16th, and then the second reading, if that's what we have to do on the 23rd. I don't think this should be just something that we push through, we're already two years late, right? And I do understand the importance of this, I understand the, we're jeopardizing potentially grants, I understand, you know, there are a lot of things with this housing element, I understand the implications of builder's remedy and what that potentially could mean. So I do believe this is very, very important, but I also think there's an opportunity for us to really listen to our community. And if the planning commission felt so strongly and voted, I believe it was 4-1 against this, it just leads me to believe that maybe we need to have a bit more conversation about this than just passing a status quo. And so I would like to see us give a little bit more time and consideration to this. And so I do not think we should meet December 9th, I mean, I am available December 9th, it's not that, oh, I've got plans and I don't want to be here. I keep every Tuesday open for board meetings just in case, I just don't like the process of this. I don't like that we're sending out public notices that we're meeting on December 9th, when in fact we're voting on that this morning, but it's already been notified, like, there's just something wrong with that process. And so fundamentally, I just don't think it's right, and so I will not be supporting the 9th, and I hope that my colleagues, I hope that you will see the challenge that this is bringing, and that we should be reading, doing the first reading on the 16th with either the second reading on the 23rd, or even, you know, another date to be, you know, even if, does it have to be so many days in between the first reading and the second reading?
I believe so, County Council can help with that, if that's okay.
How many days between the first reading and the second reading?
As long as there is regular meetings, there would be inconsecutive regular meetings, is what's required.
So, is it even? I mean, next week isn't really a regular meeting, right? Like, I know that we're taking that action, but legally, could somebody fight that in court? Does it, you know, that it's like, well, you just, you voted to make it a regular board meeting to fit your own, you know, agenda or whatever. And so when it goes to court, could. And so, when it goes to court, could it be thrown out because it actually was not a regular scheduled board meeting?
It certainly is possible. Certainly, if the board is concerned about public notice, then certainly the most conservative approach to ensure that your concerns have been addressed as well as those of the communities would be to then have the first reading on the 16th with the second reading at the first scheduled meeting in January.
Are we at risk of losing a grant if it goes into 2026 more than at risk of it staying right now? I mean, you know, are we at risk if we take an additional 30 days to make sure that we are really following, we're not changing anything, making any exceptions, but we are truly following from one regular scheduled meeting to another? Is there any additional risk in that with losing grants, with builder remedy, anything like that that pertains to the housing element?
In our department, I don't have any grants that are pending right now, the certification of the housing element. I know that HHSA has been concerned. I'm not sure if they have anything that is pending at this time, but that I know of in the department now.
My concern is that we send a letter to the state stating that we're going to meet the deadline by early December. And so, we're going to fail to our promise in the letter about meeting that deadline that we stated on the letter. So that will be my biggest concern. The other concern is, Public Works has not been able to send the information to the state regarding the $11.5 million. And I just hope that you remember also that we have a deadline for the funding to come to the county. We had to identify the roads and we had to send a letter to the state, but we are compliant with the housing element, which is everything is tied to it. So it's up to the board to decide whether they want to do it early December, early January, but we're not going to meet the deadline that we promised the state.
But I mean, we're already two years late.
Yes, okay, understood.
Yeah, no, I mean, I get it. I just, I don't like this feeling of being strong-armed by the state, right? Like, you have this $11 million, oh, you don't get it in, okay? Like, I just feel like, we represent this community and we have got to listen to our community. And we're already two months late. I would rather give it another 30 days to make sure that we are fully compliant rather than being out of compliance with the state in huge lawsuits moving into the future. I just don't, is that really, you know, I just don't know that that's really where we want to go either. I feel like we're between a rock and a hard spot. And so, it's a very challenging place to be, sitting up here with this in front of us.
Supervisor, if that is the board's will, we certainly could notify the state of exactly what we are doing and the timing, just to let them know that we are diligently pursuing this and trying to ensure proper notice to the community as well as appropriate time for the board to deliberate and to consider this very important issue. So we could certainly could do that on both fronts, to at least let the state know that we are not simply disregarding their concerns. We are, in fact, diligently addressing them, but at the same time, giving the board sufficient time to consider these issues.
I appreciate that. I also would want to make sure that we are notifying all of the people within the areas that are potentially, and, you know, I don't, I mean, it sounds like there's been concern about, have we notified, in what ways have we notified? I would like to, and I know the challenges, Abraham, that your department is facing. I know you guys have a huge shortage of staffing. But I would like to do more than the minimum in notifying people, you know? I know, back in the day, I believe it used to be, things were sent by certified letter. I get there's a cost associated with that. But I really would like to see that we've done more than the minimum in notifying people that these impacts, you know, and this is a huge impact potentially for residents, for neighborhoods. And so, I think it's really important that we get their feedback. And so, and I apologize, I feel like this happens all the time, right? Like, you have all these different meetings and different things that you've done, public outreach, and then at the last second, right before something is going to be approved, then all of a sudden, it's kind of like, wait, hold on. But I still think that we have an opportunity to get things right. And so, I would err on the side of caution. And so, I, my preference would be, we hold the first hearing on the 16th. The second hearing would be the first meeting in January, but that will be up to my colleagues to see what they have to say.
I just want clarification on one item, because I think there's some misunderstanding about notices. So can you walk us through the process, Abraham? Because, so one thing that we have to remember, the notices to the residents are not certified notices.
No, I know that they are not. That's what I'm suggesting, though, is that perhaps they are, or that we look at a way. Because I have looked, I looked at the maps that were provided to us with a 300-foot buffer. And I called several people within that 300-foot buffer zone area, and they have all told me, no, I haven't received anything from the county.
Okay, so I just want Abraham to have the opportunity to explain how many letters were sent and which date, even though that we don't have the certified mail, because it's not required to have a certified mail. So just walk us through the process, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Per Government Code 65854B2, the requirement is to send out notification. It does not indicate, as CIO Colio indicates, it does not have to be certified, but as long as it's sent to the property owners, the subject properties, and 300-foot radius, which the information we received from our county records. And we sent, for the Planning Commission meeting on the 19th of November, we started preparing approximately 500 envelopes and letters to send out to all the property owners and within the 300-foot buffers of all the 12 parcels as well, beginning October 28th. And the last day was October 31st. So meeting those, that 20-day before the Planning Commission hearing. And we know they were out, we received a few phone calls, people saying, hey, I got this letter, just wanted to see what it was about. So we have, we had various phone calls. Stephanie Reck, our senior planner, who unfortunately is no longer with the county of San Marino, took the lead on that and was able to send them. And because of the item on, for today, for the December 9th, because we, if today it was determined that we were to have the meeting on the 9th, it would be too late to send the public notice today to the newspaper and to meet the timeline as well. So, which is why the direction was to send it, it was sent, it was sent on Tuesday, the 25th of November, to meet the deadline for the December 9th. Sure.
Yeah, first go to, so we don't forget it. Supervisor Curro, did you have anything?
Uh, yes, I appreciate all the questions from Supervisor Setello. I actually have received calls from individuals in these areas. And my main concern is also, even though we make this commitment to the state, but the transparency to the voters and the parcel owners and ensuring that they were informed properly. It appears, I need more information about the 300-foot notification that supposedly happened in October. I know that in order to do these notices, you have to contact the GIS department. If it can just be validated, and the feedback I've received is that property owners are concerned about their property values going down because the density is so high that they're not going to be able to actually have a developer. And then, if they don't develop and they stay, they're not under the ag element or the ag zoning, which takes away some of their freedom when it comes to, you know, right to farm. And so, how do we find a balance here? And how do we ensure that we're working with these residents and ensuring that we're looking at all the options and what could come forward to the board to find a compromise or a happy medium? Whether that's, you know, if these parcels are not developed, that they still have the rights of the right to farm? How do we ensure that we're not taking away value, the heat of the ag industry moving forward? It's come up many times in the ag element that the ag community uses the value of their properties to be able to fund during downtimes and when big investments need to happen. And if banks and lenders are not willing to keep that value at that level, then it's going to remove the ag industry from that area. And then, if we aren't able to develop because of lack of infrastructure and the fact that the majority of these all are going to have to be annexed into the city of Hollister for services, that we're looking at that long-term impact on individuals. If there, I'm not, I'm, I'd like, where I'm going to go with wherever this is, is that I need more confirmation that these individual property owners did, were notified the 300-foot. And I'm understanding that that's not just a government code, but it's a county ordinance. And it doesn't have to be certified, but it does have to be the 300-foot, is my understanding. And if Council wants to step in and, you know, educate me on that, that's great. At the same time, when it comes to the delay, the delay, if we could notify the state of the reason for the delay to ensure that we are not going to be in any litigation and we can move forward with the notifications to these individuals and adopt in January, what are we really losing? We're already behind, you know, by three years. What is six more weeks going to do? If six more weeks is going to make us lose multi-millions of dollars, that's a different topic. I'm just very concerned that moving this agenda item and calling for a regular board meeting is pushing the transparency and the public's ability to respond. And to have the Planning Commission vote 4-1 on this, to not approve it, is very concerning for me. I feel like there's information we're not fully getting. And I think the delay would give us time to have more of that information brought forward.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Zenger.
Sure. Yes, yeah, so, okay, first, from what I understand in the letters, the emails from County Council and Abraham, is that these letters did go out. I believe that, I don't think Abraham's lying about that. I think the letters went out as they were supposed to. And I, maybe there could have been additional phone calls or something like this, but I believe the letters did go out to the property owners and those within the 300 feet, as required. I'll say that as far as the scheduling issues and the Planning Commission, it's not so much that the Planning Commission decision didn't go the way that I wanted or that, you know, Planning Department wanted. It's the way that they had already basically agreed to. Because we had all gone through this, we as the board went through this housing element, we looked at the sites, we looked at density. Last time we spoke about it, I had some concerns about it, but we ended up going forward with it, 5-0, because we said, well, look, we don't have an option, we basically have to do this. And the Planning Commission had also already understood and sort of agreed in the first part to what was going on. And then at the meeting, among some commissioners, there is now shock about the density, as if that was a new, new number that popped out, but it wasn't. We had discussed it for years now with that exact number. And so, it was a little confusing as to why that was now surprising at the Planning Commission, because it didn't make a lot of sense. So I think that's why the scheduling of this and what we're working on is so last-minute, maybe, and changing and confusing, because that was a really surprising thing. And it was almost as if some of them were, had forgotten, I guess, the information that we'd already discussed and that we had joint meetings about with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. So it was very confusing, their decision was confusing in that regard. And I think there was maybe some confusion among them, because like I said, they were speaking as if the information was new and it wasn't, because we all sat here together and went through it. I'll say, my biggest concerns are the $11 million and builder's remedy. Those are my two concerns with the housing element. That's why I'm concerned about getting this done, is because I don't want to miss out on $11 million that we could use, as we've discussed, for a lot of roads. And I'm concerned about builder's remedy, because that's going to be a nightmare, a very bad thing. And the more that we put this off, the longer there is opportunity for builder's remedy projects to get grandfathered, essentially, and we don't want that. I don't want that. I know the community at large does not want that. And so, it's a tough situation we're in, as far as the timeline goes. Those are my concerns. If those, you know, if we push it back a week and those, it's not going to be an issue, then that's okay. But if those are going to be an issue, then I have a problem, because those are too big of concerns to ignore like that. As far as some of the comments that Supervisor Curro made with the farming, and I heard some of the same things, and I understand that concern. They say, hey, well, we're farming now, if we rezonate this density, we're not going to be able to keep farming. I absolutely want to do everything that we can to make sure that anyone that is currently farming can continue doing that. I want to make sure that we work with our ag commissioner and everything that we can possibly do so that they can keep farming, they can do that. And we talked about, I know they talk about the loans against their property and, you know, if it's, I don't really think they would have problems getting loans if it was, went from ag to a high-density residential availability. I don't think they'd have an issue with that. And so, but I do want to work with our ag commissioner and everyone to make sure that, look, if you're, if you have a property and you're farming, you go ahead and plant another, you know, field of hay. You can plant again, like, I want to make sure that that is, they can keep doing that, regardless of the timelines or anything like that. But I've explained my concerns, it's with builder's remedy and the $11 million, and I want to make sure that we get those. I guess, yeah, just, it's, maybe we don't have absolute clarity on whether or not pushing this back at all is going to compromise those two things. And so, that's sort of the sticky situation. But I know that, also, to be completely frank at this point, if we make any dramatic changes to what we are planning, then we're really going to be put back. And that is actually going to be a problem, I know that's going to be. I know we're going to miss out on the grant, I know we're going to have builder's remedy issues if we make any substantial changes, because we're going to have to redo a lot of this process. And we've discussed that with Abraham in the past. And so, that's a concern going forward, we need to keep that in mind. And I think that's why the last time that we discussed this at the board level, there was a push. I mean, I had some concerns at the time, and there was a push to keep moving forward, because, look, we can't redo everything now. So those are my concerns.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Velazquez?
Thank you. Many of you know, I've had a problem with the state mandates for quite a while. I don't like them, I don't like being pushed around by the state, but I am proud of what we've done here as a board, because we took something that was rotten and we built a good plan here, a really good plan. I'm not going to say it's perfect, but I'm going to say it's a lot better than having thousands and thousands of single-family houses built around this county. And that's the direction we're going in, and we weren't going to be able to stop it. Builder remedy kicks in, which developers are hoping they can have kick in. They're going to build 1,500 houses around Ridge Park. They're going to build several hundred houses around the airport. They're going to build several hundred houses along 101. The list goes on. This is a dream scenario for developers. They get to do whatever they want. And that is what I call real bad planning. And that's not the direction we have to go in, because again, we worked hard as a board to come up with a plan. I think the, when we have these conversations, is how do we get it done before the end of the year? We were hoping earlier, but we're at the end of the year now. If we change anything, anything, we're put back six months or more. That's the reality of this whole thing. We have $11 million that's basically owed to us through these grants because of the flooding we experienced in the past. You know, we're putting so much at risk for some changes. And again, I think all of us agreed of the plan. And the plan was, worked out great, because we addressed the state mandates, we prevented sprawl throughout the county. Remember, just six months or a year ago, the city was figuring out ways to allow for 3,000 acres of farmland to become housing, single-family housing, tens of to become housing, single-family housing, tens of thousands of houses. And we worked on a better solution to bring in infill that is for our own residents, teachers, the workforce, housing, that makes sense. No longer building houses so we're catering to out-of-town people looking for a cheap house. What we're focused on here as a board was making sure the housing is for our own residents now. So we're not increasing population. What we're doing is planning. We want to do everything we can to protect our farmland. And if somebody wants to keep farming on their land, I'm all for it. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure they can keep doing it. This does not change that whatsoever. It encourages the farmers to keep farming on their land. These are small parcels, though, that are infill. And again, what we don't need is just more single-family houses. What we need is housing for our, our workforce, teachers, and so on. So we need to keep working together in a better plan, a better way. And again, I, I really think, and I was really proud of this board for working together and figuring out a way to, to make sense of it and not just allow the state to control us. Because at the end of the day, they didn't. What we did was just better planning. I would say exceptionally better planning than what was out there before because it was, it was a disaster. I happened to be at the planning commission meeting when it was rejected, and there was just confusion. There was confusion about, started with the mailing of the letters and some members feeling that the public around didn't get it. But as we stated at the meeting, they were all mailed the letters. And I know how this works because I've seen these letters from the city. They come to my office from our residence, and you look at them, you're like, oh, government mumbo jumbo. And you, most people probably throw it away, unfortunately, but they were sent out. They met all the, all the requirements that are, have to be met, and that's the process. You know, is it perfect? Are we going to go to everybody's house and knock on their doors? No. Can we send certified mails to everybody? Probably not going to work either. If you have property, you see a letter from city or county, open the letters. We have to keep moving forward on what we're trying to do. And the idea, the conversation really started taking root around this idea of density. And density, you know, I know some people love to go out there and say they want to build five-story buildings, six-story, eight-story buildings that our department cannot get to. That is an absolute lie. Knowingly, people are spreading this misinformation. Beni Lin, I want to make sure you, you write that down. Knowingly are spreading this misinformation. You're talking about projects we already had that have been very successful in our community to provide affordable housing. We have some on, off of Forest Street. We have some off of Line Street that have been very successful. They're not eight-story buildings. These are two-story, maybe tops three-story. This is, again, housing for our community, and it's not that they have to build anything. This is about planning. And I'm sure, want to make, I want to make sure that we're not turning to the side and allowing the builders to go off and do what they want. Again, Beni Lin, make sure you write that down. I want to make sure we're very, very clear on this. Builders do not decide how we grow in our community. We decide. Those days are over, and I will not stand here or sit here and allow builders to play games with us. So we put this thing off for months and months and then a different twist, and then magically they get the rights to build whatever they want. I want to make sure our community is taken care of in a very positive way. It's never going to be perfect. Let's be very clear about this. It's never going to be perfect. There's always going to be something that's not right. And do I want to work with property owners and make sure they get the most value for their land? Absolutely, I do. Absolutely. And if they want to keep farming, I want to help them farm it as long as possible. That's what we want in our community. But what I don't want is the state saying, build thousands of houses or else. And we have deadlines. We have grants. We have different things we need to take care of. And quite frankly, you know, we set a goal for the end of this year. We're at that point. I want to start the new year talking about the $11 million, how we're going to use it to fix other roads, how we're going to fund other projects, what other grants can the different departments get because we're meeting the requirements. That's, that's the plan for next year. Let's now, we've been cleaning up all this year. Now, the future is planning and good planning. Again, I'm going to give credit to the entire board because we all work together in a really positive direction to make these things happen. So personally, I want to keep moving forward on this and get us to a point of the state approving it, and we move on.
Great. Thank you very much. So just to come back to this question about the delay and the implications, I think we need a firm recommendation from staff on, is there potentially an issue? What are the risks involved with delaying this potential approval into January, mid-January? What are the risks?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I see a call you were in, but I believe that letter that was sent from HCD back in September asking for us to provide a step line, outline in regards to what, what we see, what we foresee, which is, which we're on point, except for what occurred at the planning commission meeting, also indicated implications of potential fines if there was not a certified housing element, I believe.
I don't recall the fines, but I can go back to the letter that was sent to us regarding that. Hold on one second.
Do you believe there's a risk by waiting till January?
A risk in regards to the losing out on grants or builder's remedy? We, we do, we do have 13 applications for, for builder's remedy SB 330, over 2,600 units that have been essentially submitted. And certified housing element would definitely help bring control back to the planning process that was established by the board and what, what the ordinance is, which is, you know, what we would want to make sure that we have, you know, control over because, you know, bringing them to the correct process of planning. And in regards to grants, I, you know, spoken to Steve. I've spoken to Enrique. Well, actually, we've communicated with Enrique in regards to potential grants. And I know for a fact Enrique has mentioned that they've, they've lost out on, on grants. 2024, I have in my notes, there was a 2.7 million CDBG facilities grant to construct 3,000, 3,000 to 4,000 square foot multi-purpose resident building at the migrant center that had to be given back because of not, not having a certified housing element. So there's been effects already. The county has been unable to apply for the PLHA funds for the past two years, resulting in an estimate loss of approximately $400,000 that could have been used to provide essential emergency shelter services for conically homeless individuals. Those are the risks that have, that have occurred already. Whether or not there's an imminent threat of losing additional funds, that depends on the, on the different departments.
Okay. And then there are some implications for COG as well, is my understanding. COG, I believe, was depending on this for grant funding. Are you aware of that?
That, that could be a possibility. A lot of the grants throughout, you know, city and county do have a certified housing element as, as a requirement to be able to, especially if they're competitive. COG is actively involved in the housing element in regards to, they are the ones that are assigned the arena numbers, and they work together with the cities, some homeless, some Hollister in the county to, to start the process. But I'm not aware if there's, if there is an actual direct grant opportunity that may be missed. I usually have monthly meetings with COG on the technical advisory committee, and I keep them updated on our progress on the housing element. And in our last meeting, I did not hear anything from Benu in regards to potential grant loss.
Okay. I'm trying to find my, I do know that Benu Abraham, the executive director of COG, had, had expressed concern when they, initially when the planning commission made its latest ruling on the four-to-one vote, that there were implications potentially for COG and grant funding as well. So I think that's just something important to note as far as the risk side of this. What about the 23rd of December? Is that an issue? I mean, that was brought up by Supervisor Satello. That would give an additional, that would push this out. We have staffing issues. It's getting close to the holidays. What's, what about the 23rd?
We're not closing on the 23rd. We're going to be open.
So we could potentially schedule the, the second reading for the 23rd?
It does the desire of the board, yes.
Which would give the applicants more time or flexibility?
Yes.
To put in comments, make calls?
Yes. Who had to, you have to amend that item for the nine instead of the nine being the 23rd, that's the second reading, and we'll meet at that line for December.
Okay. Okay. I think that should be something maybe for consideration as we get to a motion as well. So I, just a few points since we're on this, you know, topic, which I think Supervisor Velazquez has aptly pointed out has been unfortunately politicized in many ways. And, you know, this goes back to, like Supervisor Zanger mentioned, this is over, well over a year ago. I think it's a couple of years ago now. We talked about these rezonings. I don't think it's anything that any of us were crazy about doing, but these are state mandates clearly. And so you're being, on one end, you're, you know, you're being told that you have to rezone for all these units. And so people are criticizing the units that were rezoned. And then on the other side of it, if you don't rezone the units, the builder's remedy stays in effect. And the very same people that are criticizing and politicizing this, you know, for claiming that we have more units than are necessary are also criticizing us because we're not getting the housing element approved. It's kind of like, you know, pick one end of the criticism spectrum, please, if you may. But I just want to make it clear that, you know, the entire board of supervisors unanimously supported moving ahead with this plan in April 2025. So this is a year and a half ago, more than a year and a half ago now. Well, no, I'm sorry. It's almost a year ago now. I apologize. And the planning commission also supported moving ahead, I believe. Do you know the timeline when the planning commission initially supported?
The recommendation, we had a special meeting with the planning commission, April 30th. We received the letter from the state's April 1st indicating that we, the county assembly has now complied with, now can essentially approve or adopt the housing element. And just, we would have to do the reasons. And so we moved quickly, and on April 30th, we had a planning commission.
Board of supervisors met, if I'm, if I'm correct, like April 15th?
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, April 30th, planning commission recommended to the, to the board, and the board met May 20th.
Okay. So April, May. So this isn't anything new. These, this information has been out there. I do understand the concern about people are saying they didn't get noticed. I fully understand that. But just to make it clear, you know, this entire board did support moving ahead with this specific plan. We had a consultant that came to us who's been working with the state and you as staff and presented essentially based on our recommendation as a board before May of 2025. We had made a prior recommendation basically saying, we'd like this to be infill. If we have to do this level of rezoning, and we have to do this in order to meet this, the submitted housing element that complies with the state, in order to avoid the builder's remedy. You know, we all agreed that, well, let's focus those rezonings as infill within the current city boundaries instead of sprawl. And that this would be multifamily units. So if somebody did want to build, there would be multifamily affordable, more multifamily affordable in our community near services within the city boundaries as opposed to the single-family sprawl that we've been trying to get away from with these developments that are miles from most of the services. And so at the time, if, if everyone recollects this correctly, you know, we were essentially presented this plan that, that, again, to meet the arena numbers, you have to rezone. You don't have to build. There is no requirement to build. That was stated in the April meeting. The consultant was very clear about that, that, you know, we have to put that on the record so we don't get these political mischaracterizations that inevitably happen anyway, that you have to rezone. You don't have to actually approve. You just have to show that you're accommodating for those units. And I think it's important to also note, since we're on this topic, that if you take that rough 4,000 number of the units that would be rezoned under this current housing element, that over 2,000 of those units are actually accounted for, so roughly half are actually accounted for from previously approved housing projects that were approved before anybody on this board of supervisors started serving. And I was the first one that started serving in January 2021. Over 2,000 of those 4,000 or so units are actually accounted for by all the single-family homes that all those critics actually supported. So anyhow, just to clarify on that, because there is a lot of just misconceptions and political abuse, abuse of, you know, information that's going on. And I also want to make it clear, if anybody were in the media or whoever wants to go back and listen to those meetings in April and May, that the hired consultant, and we, we really queried him very, very hard, you know, over and over again, is this, if we don't approve this level of rezoning, what is your recommendation? What is going to happen? He's basically said that you are not going to be complying with the state. Can we take out one of those parcels or two of those parcels? Go back and listen to it. No, you can't because you're going to, it's not going to comply with the state. And so I just want to make it clear on the record that, at least from my perspective, I don't want to speak for anybody else, that I, I, I don't want to rezone for 4,000 units. I don't want to rezone for 2,000 units. We are being required to do this. And are we going to build 2,000 additional units? Absolutely, unequivocally not. It is not going to happen as long as I'm on this board. And I think I have confidence that this board is not going to be approving that level of units. We are just complying with the state mandates through this housing element. And so there were claims out there about, you know, roughly, there was, there's 100 and something affordable units that we still have to comply. There were 800 or so units, and that we're, we're far exceeding that number with this housing element. Can you explain, Abraham? And I know I've communicated this with you because I, even in the run-up to this, I've wanted full assurance that we're going in a direction that we have to go in or we are not going to be complying with the housing element, and we're going to have to deal with the builder's remedy for as long as we are not complying. Can you, and I didn't talk to you before this meeting. We exchanged calls a while back, and then you emailed me. Can you give me your perspective on why we have to go to this level of rezoning in order to comply with the state mandate and in order to prevent ourselves from continuing to have to deal with the builder's remedy?
Absolutely, Cherkis Mickey. And I want to preface by, by indicating that there has been various public outreach. And we're going to go into those details. I didn't bring that for our, this presentation. I wasn't sure if it was going to get pulled or not, but we will get into the details. We've had multiple planning commission meetings, multiple board of supervisors meetings, multiple joint planning commission and board of supervisors meetings, multiple workshops in English and Spanish. We had a special session here at the chambers with the Latino Coalition to address special needs housing, in particular farmworker housing, all for the housing element. And I, I don't want to just, you know, belittle any concerns that are out there on people indicating that they didn't receive public comment. But the issue here is affordable housing and the need of affordable housing. And this housing element that, that you and the planning commission worked really hard on doing addresses those needs and addresses the policy that we need to be able to try to address those needs. Very quickly, I was looking at my notes and, and the legislature conference that we, that we had in February 21st with Chair, with Speaker Rivas and other representatives. We presented that in the last housing element, 2000, from 2015 to 2023, there was 1,300, 1,300 issued building permits, 1,300. And out of those, affordable housing that, that came out of those were 30 out of 1,300 units. There is a big, big need. We, and all of those workshops that we had, and we'll go into detail, we had a lot of people here that did not meet the, the below, the, the, not the low, but the very low, the 17%, below 17% families, farmworker families that were here present in English and Spanish, indicating that they didn't, they were that category. That's the reason why we need this housing element so bad. And, and to answer your question, Supervisor Cherkis Mickey, the, the number of units that you were referring to that have been previously approved already are categorized and will be presented in our, in our next public hearing are categorized as pipeline units. And those are the over 2,000 units that have already been previously approved by the county.
And those were in the presentation from last spring. And those were in the presentation from last spring, and just that people that are, that like to spread misinformation, they just sort of ignore that.
That is correct.
Again, would encourage people to go back and look at the April and May meetings to get, to gain that assurance that, we hire, look, we have to trust the consultants and the staffs that we hire, and they're telling us if we don't do this level of rezoning that we're not going to be complying with the state mandate, and we're therefore going to have to have the builder's remedy, and there's going to be less of an ability for us to say no to projects that we maybe don't agree with.
That is correct.
Continuing on that path.
That, that is correct, and the reason why we need the, the number of units that have been indicated within, or the rezones indicated is because we do have, at this, at this time, and even prior, when those 1,300 units were approved, we had a inclusionary zoning ordinance, as we do, as we do now. However, we are now seeing that the board is being more, more strict about making sure that these units are built and not necessarily, you know, have, have the option of, of, of doing the, the alternate of, of paying the NLU. And, and so because we have those minimum requirements of, the, the county has that at 15%, however, in working with HCD, HCD actually told us that they would give us a 20%, that, that, that 20% of the densities for these 12 parcels, that they would, they would feel that, that that would be, you know, that, that would meet the requirements, which is why, you know, we have that as, as 20.
But there's a buffer as well, can you just briefly speak to the buffer, the consultant? There's a buffer above when you do the calculations, and then there's a buffer?
Correct, it's very important to have the buffer because, as in, not, not unlike like previous years where we would just annually report to the, and, and I've been doing this for close to 20 years now with the city, annually reporting, before HCD just took the report, was okay, and now the buffer is very important because now if, if we indicate that, for example, in one of the parcels, if there is a development, for, for example, and we, we indicate that, you know, in, in this parcel, there's five acres, so there would be a minimum of, of 100 units, but, but the, the Planning Commission approves 80 units, they're gonna want to see that those other 20 units are allocated somewhere else, they're gonna want us to make sure that we have that. So it's very important that, that we create a buffer, because it could be that if, if a developer comes in and, and does a development that during the, the environmental process, there could be an environmental constraint that does not allow the, the potential develop, development to, to be fully built out. And so we need to make sure that we have enough units to be able to cover potential gaps that.
So we don't have to go back to the state and do more rezonings down the road?
Correct, correct.
And as far as, just lastly on this topic, and I'll move on to the schedule specifically, but the consultant, what level of communication has the consultant and/or staff been having with the state to have an assurance that we actually have to go to this level or else, or else you're not going to be complying? Has there been communications in the states been of basically affirming that you'll get certified if we do this, but you won't get certified if we take out parcels?
We, we have, during the whole process before, once, when we submitted the first, the first draft of the, or the first report of the, of the housing element, they came back and they provided comments, and they said, this is what you need in order for us to be able to consider certification. We, we, the, the, basically the process is, we, and that's all part of, you know, communication with, with the public. We addressed those comments, and then we had to have a certain amount, a certain period of time, I believe it was 30 days, to basically let the public know that we've addressed the comments, if they have any additional comments, please let us know, and then we, we submit again. And so at the third time that we resubmitted, they actually sent us a letter on, on April 1st, basically saying that if we adopt the way that they have it, that, that we can adopt the housing element, but they, they would not be certifying unless we do the rezones. If we don't do the rezones, they would not consider certification.
Okay, so if we don't do this, we don't get certified. Just want to make that clear for the record, that we're not just picking an arbitrary number, and, you know, the so-called slow-growth supervisors are actually in favor of rapid growth and all the nonsense that's been communicated out there in public. It's actually really, it's really unfortunate how much manipulation of information we have going on in this community, which brings me back to the schedule. Is there a consideration, and what would there be a benefit, a willingness to schedule as Supervisor Satello, and I don't know where you feel, you threw it out there, Supervisor Satello, I want to be fair, as far as December 23rd, and whether that would be a reasonable compromise, County Council?
Yes, I'll certainly leave that to the discretion of, of the board, but in light of all the concerns that have been expressed, both from the public and the board, one approach which would, what I'm most concerned about is trying to eliminate any procedural perceived or otherwise deficiencies that could result in litigation. If this is to be challenged, it should be challenged on the substantive grounds, not on procedural grounds. And I think as, as my responsibility to you is to provide you with my best advice to eliminate those procedural, at least perceived procedural deficiencies. So one approach, which has five components, would be to, number one, set the public hearing for December 16th, our next regular meeting. The second reading would be at the next regular meeting, which would be January 13th of 26. We would, of course, issue the required public notices. Renote, again, the, the evidence is that the, that those within the 300 feet buffer zone have in fact been noticed, but we could renotice all of them. And then send a letter to the state specifically advising of the board's action today, to let them know that the board is concerned, the board is diligently working to address the state's concerns, and that this is in fact the process that will be followed in order to adopt the new housing element. So that, that would be one approach the board could consider.
And I appreciate that, and I would just recommend adding some context about, you know, we had, the Planning Commission supported this plan, you know, many months back, and we anticipated there wouldn't be any issues, and, you know, we have no control as a board how the Planning Commission votes, and they did not approve that first reading, therefore this had to be pushed back by several weeks.
And certainly that context can be included in the letter to the state, so that they understand fully the situation that has been presented to the board and the board's diligent response to address those concerns and to get a certified housing element in place.
That said, that's, I would follow the County Council's recommendation personally on, just to make sure that we're covering all grounds, that we're not diverging on this issue, just based on a scheduling issue, procedural matter, as County Council mentioned, and that we schedule the first hearing for the 16th, schedule the second reading for that meeting in January.
I'm, I'm good with that, we can go with that. I just wanted to ask also if our representatives at the state level have anything, I don't know their relationship with HCD and how, how they intermingle and whatnot, but I don't know if it's worth reaching out to our state representatives as well to encourage them to also reach out to HCD in terms of, hey, explain, look, we're working on this, we're just trying to do it in the most transparent way possible. I just don't want the perception to be, because I know this happened in like Portola Valley, an hour and a half away, they kind of got in trouble because the state said, we think you're using this guise of community outreach to basically never do this, and we want to make sure that's not what's going on, we don't want them to think that's the idea. So I just worry about that coming off to them, we need to make it clear that that's not what's happening either.
And certainly Supervisor, within the letter, we can indicate the concerns that have been expressed by the community to the supervisors. And also, along with my advice, we can then make a compelling record that in fact, the board is diligently moving toward approval, it is not a matter of trying to delay and obstruct the certification of a housing element.
I would even just, I don't know if it needs to be in there, but I just, I'll state for the record that if we could have gotten this done in June, I would have done it in June, but we don't control the procedural steps that have to happen after that May meeting that we had, this is, we, I've been asking consistently, and I, I have to assume others, because of all the criticism out there of builder's remedy, have been asking, when can we get this to the board to get it approved? Let's get it done as soon as possible. So whatever can be expressed, that we're doing that, fitting, within the guise of the, the law and the noticing requirements, I would appreciate that as well.
And I can address that if you like, but we don't have.
Supervisor Satello, and then we'll be back.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, can we, can we address that a little bit? Like what happened between, let's say, April, May, right, comes to the Board of Supervisors, goes to Planning Commission, and then what was the process to get it to, you know, because I mean, I think, you know, it sounds like the people were kind of banking on, hey, it'll go to the Planning Commission in November, goes to the Board of Supervisors in December, and we send it off to the state.
Absolutely.
And we didn't properly, like, allocate time for, if anything goes outside of maybe what the perfect plan is, right? And so I'm just curious, like, what was the steps between April and May that had to happen to get us to kind of November? Or was it that, hey, we had April, May, we took a little bit of time, worked on budget, et cetera, right? I'm not saying that there hasn't been a ton of stuff in front of us, but I'm just wondering, I, I think that is maybe an important part of this, like, how did we, how did we get it from April and May to now here we are in December, and we're kind of like at the 23rd hour, and now it's too late to really get this done with regular scheduled meetings without having to amend anything? And so just kind of curious if maybe you could go into that a little bit? I know that, that will be questions that I will get from the public, and I think that that would be really nice for the public to hear, kind of what happened in that process.
Be happy to, absolutely. First off, April 1st, we got the letter from HCD, that was highlight, one of the highlights of the Planning Department, indicating that it is, it is, you know, able to be certified or to be approved for certification. Ecstatic, we moved quickly right away, we couldn't schedule it for the next Planning Commission meeting because of, because of procedural requirements, we, we need to notify the newspaper a week in advance in order for publication the following week, as you all know. So at that time, we had already missed the, the regular Planning Commission meeting for April, but we moved ahead and, and scheduled a special Planning Commission for April 30th, full recommendation to the board, and then we put it on to the board, board agenda for May 20th. And as you well stated, there was a lot of back and forth in regards to, you know, making sure that, you know, absolutely, this was the correct plan, and we could not eliminate any other bill, any other parcels and so forth, in order for it to start over again. And when it was approved on May 20th, the board, the board approved the, the adoption of the housing element and a resolution to initiate the rezones. So we took that concurrently, you know, we were moving, we were moving concurrently. And yes, we were going through the budget, and we were going through all these different things, but we, this was very important for us as well, so we, we, we moved on this right away. And so then we had Kim Lee Horn, our consultant, work on the environmental document. It's very important that this is a project, the rezone is a project and is pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. So therefore, we, we started with them right away, at the same time, we, we applied for a grant, and, and we, like our CIO's browser, Colleen Warren, indicated, we did get a word close to 80,000 for the work that Kim Lee Horn was gonna help us with in preparation for the environmental document. And so at that point, the environmental documents began, and it finished, the, the draft report finished in September. So then by law, we have to, again, a procedural thing, we had to essentially do a public, public review period for 30 days, and that ended in September. I mean, sorry, the draft, September, and that ended on October. As soon as that ended in October, we then did the notifications, we prepared the notifications for the Planning Commission of the regular meeting of November 19th, and we, we started sending out those notifications on October 28th, the last notifications were sent out October 31st, the newspaper published on October 31st, and we had our Planning Commission meeting on November 19th. We did a full presentation, and essentially the first comment from the Planning Commission was notification. And again, not, you know, I don't want to look less on anybody who's indicating that they did not receive notification, but it just, there was, all the work that was done on the, the real need of the housing element, the affordability, special needs housing, big, big needs that we've had and we've discussed over the past two years were not addressed, it was just on notification, and they just had a 41 vote, recommended denial to the, to the Board of Supervisors, and we're here today.
Thank you, I really appreciate the explanation of kind of that timeline and schedule, and so I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? I would just entertain a motion, I stated, we're kind of where I'm at at this point, to set a hearing for the 16th and a second reading for January 13th, to make sure that we are not taking any risk with meeting noticing requirements, while we also would communicate to the state that we are moving forward with this in diligent matter and explaining the circumstances to the state that led to the need for a monthly.
I will make a motion to move forward with County Council's recommendation that included the five steps, including the meetings on December 16th and January 13th in the letter.
Move it first, we have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, roll call, please.
Supervisor Cosmicke?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five oh vote, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. And I would take us to our regular agenda, the first item is 2.8 from the CIO's office, which is approve lifting the hiring freeze to authorize RMA Planning to hire 1FTE Planning Assistant and Engineering and Public Works to hire a limited-term accounting manager through June 30th, 2026, and we have Henny Ring here, Henny?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board, Henny Ring with Administration Human Resources. The first item again is to, as you stated, approve the hiring, lifting the hiring freeze for position in, two positions in Resource Management Agency, one in engineering and public works and the other in planning. Let me give you a little background, public works, regarding public works, on September 29th of 2025, a current FTE Accounting Manager in the Public Works Division submitted resignation effective for October 10th. As part of the balancing for the county budget for '25-'26, the county manager position was deleted from the department's budget that was adopted by the board on October 1st. In order for the county auditors to complete reporting to the State Controller's Office, a variety of year-end tasks are needed to be completed for the fiscal year to close the books for '24-'25. Public Works Division is requesting to hire a limited-term accounting manager to process, to assist in this process. The incumbent would also spend substantial time working on some road and bridge projects. Currently, there is funding in the roads fund for about approximately seven months salary for the limited-term accounting manager. Background for planning, as part of the balancing for '25-'26 county budget, again, there was a 1FTE principal planner and two FTE associate planner positions that were deleted from the department's budget that were adopted again by the board on October 1st. Since the adoption of the county's budget, the Planning Division has received two additional resignations, one as a planning, or excuse me, one Building Inspector III, which separated on November 14th, and then a senior planner that separated effective November 21st. Unfortunately, this leaves the department with only two professionals, planning staff. The Planning Division is requesting to hire a 1.0 FTE Planner Assistant. There would be salary savings from the vacated senior planner and, but Building Inspector III positions, but there is also approximately about another 20,000 in a cannabis project budget. The savings and costs to fill a planner position would not exceed 58,500, which would only run through June 30th of 2026. Again, the fiscal impact for the limited term in planning for the accounting manager, again, there's, from review of the roads maintenance budget, there are sufficient funds that would cover approximately seven months in the amount not to exceed $111,000. And the fiscal impact for the planner assistant, the year is salary savings with the two vacated positions that just separated the senior planner and Building Inspector III, and that would not exceed the 58,500. So again, staff's recommendation is to allocate a limited term of 1.0 FTE. So again, staff's recommendation is to allocate a limited term of 1.0 FTE accounting manager. And that would be added to the county's schedule of authorized position, the '25, '26 authorized positions, and then approve the lift, uh, hiring, lifting the hiring freeze to allow the recruitment for that limited term accounting manager. Again, that would run through December, excuse me, June 30th, 2026, and Human Resources would conduct an open recruitment for that. And in addition, approve the lifting of the hiring freeze and authorize, um, the Resource Management Agency Division to hire a 1.0 FTE planner assistant and then direct Human Resources to open a recruitment for that as well. So that is the first recommendation. I'm here for any questions?
Thank you very much. We'll go to public comment.
In chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. You've been unmuted. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Elias Alina. But understanding what Ms. Hens just said is that there was a freeze for two positions in the RMA with regards to the Planning Department. And then that was two positions that were frozen that were not filled. And then you have three individuals that have left the county position recently, within the last three weeks. So now that would be, you would be negative five positions. I strongly recommend that you are earlier discussing how the department has been overwhelmed and, and you need to get your housing element, but you, you're down five people and you're definitely down three individuals who just recently left. I strongly recommend and suggest that you open up the positions for those people that have left. This is not about saving money. This is about your reputation of San Bernardino County, uh, doing a job that's supposed to be, you know, for the, for the individuals of this community. And being short this staff more so is more work for the individuals that are already working there. They're overwhelmed, they're overworked, and now that you've lost three people, it's even more so. I strongly recommend you bring up the subject to actually bring in more than just replacing one for four positions. Thank you.
We have no further comments.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Questions, comments? Uh, Supervisor, uh, and CIO, Supervisor Curro, did you have anything? So don't, since you're on Zoom?
Yeah, I, I, my biggest concern, and I think we've made this pretty clear, I'm not sure how many meetings it's been, but the RMA department and the lack of, this was created in 2000, I believe, in '12 due to the, the debacle of, you know, the housing bubble bursting. And we consolidated these departments together for efficiency and funding purposes. And we as a board, I feel, have been very united about separating whatever we're doing, regardless of the positions that are being hired or opened for hiring. We have to continue to look at the big picture goal. The big picture goal, in my opinion, as a single supervisor, is that we have a public works department with a department head in charge of the public works department that manages and makes recommendations to the CIO and works with the, the CIO and the Board of Supervisors to be serving the community at the best possible with the revenue resources that we have. And that building and planning has a department head. I understand that we've had people leave because of our budget struggles, but we have to look at the goal and the eye on the prize. The eye on the prize is serving the public the best way possible. There are things that are happening that we're seeing in the news about, you know, the city of Hollister and what's happening there. I want to make sure that the public's aware that any positions that we're bringing on or are bringing back, that we're looking at it as a, a big picture item, not just we need to fill these positions to fit the need right now because we're behind on something, whatever the something is. And that, that's my only comment. And I really am, am grateful that this is, I'm saddened that we've lost people, but we need to be able to show staff and the public that we are taking action moving forward. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, just a comment. The request from the department was to fill one position, but we also, because of the timeline it takes to get a new person on board, it takes two to three months, we working with the department to bring to outsource services so the projects do not stop. And by doing that is reallocating some of those funds to consultant services so the projects that are ongoing do not get lost in the process. And so that's the approach that we're taking. We are going to recruit eventually, but at the same time, we cannot stop the projects that we have in place. And therefore, the request is to do a combination of recruiting one individual for now, uh, plan for the big picture, like Supervisor Curro mentions in her comments, and also hire a consultant to help us to continue moving forward.
Anything further from the board? Uh, I don't either. I just would echo what Supervisor Curro said on a somewhat related topic as far as RMA planning. Nice try on the consolidation, but if we can have a plan laid out at some point for how we're going to separate those departments and bring up proposal back, I would appreciate that as well. It's kind of like mixing the library and the sheriff's office together. I don't really see the, necessarily the seamless relevance between those two departments under one roof. So anyhow, I'd entertain a motion to approve the recommendation on 2.8.
Motion to approve as recommended.
We have a first, we have a second. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Sotelo?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five oh vote, motion passes.
Great. That would take us to 2. B, which is CIO as well, approve resolution authorizing the holiday closure schedule for departments, December 24th through the 31st, uh, and then through January 2nd as well. CIO?
All right. That would be me as well.
Henny's there, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, as the board is aware, the past few years, they've approved some office closures for the holiday period at the end of December. County employees would receive, will receive their holiday pay for Thursday, December 25th and Thursday, January 1st, 2026. Therefore, no vacation will be necessary for those days. Additionally, pursuant to Rule 6.11.1C of the county's personnel rules and procedures, eligible county employees may use administrative holiday that can be used on December 21st, or excuse me, December 24th, or on December 31st of 2025 with department head approval. For those departments that will close, there is an Exhibit A, which shows which departments would be electing office closures. And then they will take their holiday closure using their accrued, earned accruals or will record their time as unpaid if they do not have accruals available, thus reducing the county's accrual bank liability. Again, we have this, the, there's a resolution in there to adopt the 2025 holiday schedule, which Exhibit A again highlights each department. The county is recommending the following days for closure, because the calendar changes every year, so we have to adjust when those closure dates would be effective. So the holiday closure actually would be Friday, December 26th, Monday, December 29th, Tuesday, December 30th, Wednesday, December 31st, and then Friday, December, or excuse me, Friday, January 2nd of 2026, because the new year is on Thursday. Employees will use their accruals to earn, of earned vacation leave, their 2025 administrative comp leave, 2025 floating holiday leave in December, or excuse me, in 2025 for the December 26th through the December 31st dates for holiday closure. Employees would use vacation leave, 2026 administrative leave, or 2026 floating holiday leave for the January 2nd of 2026 closure date. Again, as I mentioned, in Exhibit A is the list of the departments and what their closure dates they are requesting from the board. I can read those off for you if you like, or I can highlight some of the things that are specific to certain departments, such as, I will give you the example, COG is asking for December 31st to close their, their office on that, the 23rd instead of the 24th. They're asking for additional day. Also, the treasurer, tax collector, and public administrator is asking to close an additional from 12 noon till 5:00 PM on December 22nd and December 31st, or excuse me, December 23rd, which is the Monday and Tuesday. They're asking to do a little bit extended part in the closure piece. Again, I'm available for any questions or if you would like me to read through what departments are, are requesting, or any questions that you have with that, I'm available for that as well.
We'll go to public comment.
In chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. I have no public comment.
Bring it back to the board. Supervisor Sotelo?
Thank you. Just a couple of just clarifications that I need. So treasurer, tax collector, public administrator, they are proposing to work Monday and Tuesday, the 22nd and the 23rd, but both of those days get off at noon?
Yeah, close at noon, excuse me, those days. I believe, and I think Belinda is here, I think part of it is, is that they're doing the closing of their taxes. And so they're spending a lot of time in the office and so they're asking to, to close to the lobby, correct?
So you're closing to the public at noon? But, okay, gotcha. I just wasn't too sure. I'm like, is that right? Both days you want to close at noon?
Not additional holiday.
And then HHSA and Behavioral Health, um, close December 26th and January 2nd. I think it says that on both of them. Well, Health and Human Services is a little bit different, but essentially it's the same thing. How come we don't list December 25th, 26th, January 1st, January 2nd? It, it, it almost makes it seem like you're open on the 25th and January 1st.
And I can add that to the schedule. Basically, this is just holiday closure is office closures because those are already holidays, they're, they're already, they're closed.
Okay.
So I just did add that to the list.
Okay.
They're already
So this isn't something the public sees?
No. This, well, they would actually be posting this in their windows, in their door, on their recordings for their phone, whatever.
I just think it's, you, just for clarification, I just think it's easier when we say we'll be closed, you know, December 25th and 26th, and January 1st and January 2nd. We assume that it's kind of, people would know that, but I think just always a little more information is better than less. And so I would just make sure that we include that because all of the others, you know, close December 24th through, you know, whatever. Or like if you look at the county clerk recorder's office, close December 25th and January 1st, where essentially, you could essentially leave them off because they're only going to be closed for the holidays. But I think it's nice that it's there stating they're closed on the 25th and the 1st. So my only recommendation would be for both Behavioral Health and HHSA that we include that they are closed on the 25th and the 1st.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Anything further, Supervisor Curro? Do you have anything?
Actually, I did. Why is the Board of Supervisor in charge of the holiday schedule for the Council of Government, which is a JPA?
So part of those employees are, and they're, they're under SEIU, they are represented. So we have to list them because we represent them through bargaining.
Okay, sorry. It just doesn't make sense to me. So like if we said no to this, they would have no authority to still do it?
That's a good question. I'd have to do a little bit
I just think that's kind of silly, but that's my comment.
Yeah, and I think the reason why is that they've always been included through the closure process. I think that's the reason why they've been added to the list.
Always been just maybe something to look at for future.
Absolutely.
Anything further? Entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
First, we have a second roll call, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Sotelo?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five oh vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. That would take us to closed session. Do we have public comment on closed session?
In chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. I have no comments.
All right, we'll adjourn to closed session. Is there an estimate on time?
Really quick on closed session. So Supervisor Curro's here, but in order to take her in there, I think what she'll need to do is maybe call somebody's cell phone and just have her on speaker in there. And she can
Or send a Zoom link, whatever you guys want.
And she can just mute herself. The only reason, I don't know about doing, keeping her on Zoom here because he controls the Zoom.
Yeah, you can't. I, I have to get off of this.
Yeah, she would have to mute herself if you stay here.
But we will give her a call and we'll put her on speakerphone.
Okay, sounds great, guys. I'm going to take a two minute.
Sounds good. And I believe the closed session should be pretty quick, so we should be able to get them done within 30 minutes. Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll adjourn to closed session. Okay, thank you very much. We'll adjourn to closed session.
There you go.
All right, thank you. We're back from closed session. County Council, anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board of Supervisors, there is no reportable action. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We are adjourned.